I'd like to call the Manner City Council Work Session for September 3, 2024, to order. We'll start with the pledge to the flag.
(inaudible).
It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any doubt.
Okay. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kirsner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Marn.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Stelling.
Here.
Okay. Counsel, tonight, the topic is, I guess it's risk mitigation for future storm events. And I'd like to start it off. It's my perception that every year now, we're getting some really strong storms that blow in, in the summertime. And increasingly, I think what we're seeing is storm damage that takes out power to a large amount of homes in the city. And power is out for five days or so this time, I think even a little bit more in some areas. But the August 6th storm was a very big storm. Four thousand five hundred and ninety thousand homes in northeast Ohio were put into dark. First Energy had 3,200 hazard calls regarding down lines. In Manner here, we had wind gusts up to 86 miles per hour in that storm event, two and a half inches of rain during that storm, and we had 5,691 homes the next day reported without power. That's of a total of 23,520 homes in Manner, a whopping 24 percent. So last year, in 2023, August 25th, we saw a tornado come ripping through. And that did similar event to what we had, but maybe not quite as many homes out. So I think that there's something that we should be looking at in terms of what actually takes down the power lines. For the most part, it's the trees. We have over mature trees that have never been, never been pruned, never been taken care of. And we've got power lines on poles 35 feet above the street level. And some of these trees, 50 feet high and as high as 100 feet. These are old, mature trees. And I just, the day after that storm, I rode around most of Manner, looking at where the power outages were. And I think that there's a high level of predictability as to which trees are going to cause problems in future storms. So off the top of my head, I'd like to, I'd like to see if, if we could look at some of these trees and identify the ones that, that put, put us at risk. Because these storms, I don't think are going to stop. I mean, for whatever reason you think that, you know, the climate's changing, it's hard to, it's hard to deny that it's not. So I would, I would like to, to see if it's possible, if we would be able to find a way to maybe mitigate some of the risk in, going into the future. Problems, of course, are really big. Tree removal and pruning is a huge cost. But, you know, I, I, I think that unless we start looking at the problem and what the causes are, and not instantly charge, you know, charging First Energy as, as the people who are the problem, I don't think anything's going to change. So. So Ken, how about if I throw it out to you? We've talked about this a couple of times. I'd love to get your perspective and maybe have the chiefs talk about what they saw and experienced.
Sure. Happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. So as, as we look at this, I think everyone here understands that when we have these massive storms, we will have these incidents. These are somewhat unusual circumstances, but I think Mr. Blake pointed out, they seem to be happening with a little bit more frequency than we may be seeing in the past. And as we view it, I think there are three components to this that would improve serviceability to the public. The first you've already mentioned, which is helping to reduce risks to the electrical system as we see it within our community and other communities. The second, I would say, is working with the utility for grid modernization and building resiliency into their, into their grid. That's a big thing, and I think we can talk a little bit more about that tonight. I know that there's a lot of investment that may be planned, both here with First Energy, although we have very little understanding of just where and what that will be. So I, I did a little bit of research in anticipation of this meeting. And then the third component of that, I think, is where we are actually in a very good position, which is just in our public service response to these, these storm events. And I think at some point here during your course of your meeting, we might ask the chiefs to weigh in. I think we were satisfied with, with, with our response. Hopefully, the public was as well. But again, building some strength into our service capability is an important component of, of trying to serve the public in this respect. From, and I know we're going to get to, to trees, but I do look at the city as having a role, but a greater role being provided by, in our case, First Energy in terms of how they respond to, to these type of events in the future. I noticed on their website, and we have heard, and I know council has heard some information about this in the past, they have a program known as their Energize 365, which is, they're touting as the First Energy's grid evolution initiative. So it's intended to have planned investment of about $26 billion across their distribution and trans, transmission systems between 2024 and 2028. So we're in 2024. Their intention is to provide smarter, more secure, reliable grid that can accommodate what we expect, the expansion of electrical vehicles, and really the future high demand that's expected of our current grid. In other words, business expansion, expansion of, of, that's going to create a lot more need for generation capacity. And I know we have the benefit of having Senator Serino here tonight, and I know he's going to speak a little bit about that because it's a huge issue here in our state, in frankly, all 50 states. And as we see the economy changing over time and a higher reliance and need for greater energy use, a dependable grid is absolutely essential to matching up with the need for additional generation. I find it interesting because First Energy actually makes a reference on their website to a, a program in New Jersey called Energize New Jersey. And we did a little research on that as well. And they have a grid modernization program that spends hundreds of millions of dollars, billions of dollars really, on upgrading hundreds of miles of overhead lines, burying overhead lines where they can, adding more robust wires when those wires are replaced, stronger, more durable poles when those are replaced, replacing underground lines with new, more protected cables, installing the TripSaver devices that you are already familiar with, that First Energy does utilize. And, and of course, that, that eliminates longer outages, but I think, and on the other side of that, we've seen some frustration with the fact that they will trip and cause those mini outages from time to time in neighborhoods that are of a very short duration, but they do, they do eliminate the need for longer term outages that would have otherwise happened if they didn't have that on the system. So, so that's the kind of thing that I think we have a responsibility to ask First Energy and say, what about this modernization program? What can you do for us? And we have some ideas on how we would do that, identifying some of their transfer, transmission and distribution systems that are the most vulnerable. We've come to understand that in this last storm event, some significant damage that happened to their substations, in particular in Manner-on-the-Lake, caused a number of the large, the large area that was out in our, at least in our city and in Manner-on-the-Lake. We're still waiting, and I know council's waiting on that report that Ms. Zeeley mentioned that First Energy was still in the process of completing. And we'll be interested in hearing that because, again, I think, looking at some of those high, those, those, those facilities that have the most impact or that are the most vulnerable in their system, and those that are, those single source feeds in substations are single source feeds. We know that there are areas of the city that you, where they have very little redundancy, if, if any redundancy. So in other words, if a line goes down and it's serving a neighborhood, there's no way to feed that from, from another part of their circuit. And then just really looking at better disclosure from the utility side in terms of the age of their wires and components and that, which, a lot of information that we've asked for over the years, and I think all utilities tend to be a little bit less, well, private utilities, that is, are a little less likely to want to provide to us. We need, I think we also need to talk to them, to the point that you were making earlier, Mr. President, about encouraging more aggressive tree trimming and removal of trees along and within their easements. We know that that comes with some level of backlash from our residents. We expect that, but I think we're at a position here in our community that providing that resilience is more important than, than, you know, some of the concerns that our residents sometimes express to us when those trees are, are pruned overly, in their opinion, and maybe ours as well, in an overly aggressive fashion. I think our city has done a good job of working with the utility and with residents of making it clear that if they remove trees in the right of way, that we're, we're always willing to replace those trees at city expense with a species that's less likely to intrude upon and cause problems over time with, with those same utilities. And then I, we have a couple of good examples in our city, Ward 3 in particular, where First Energy has shared recommendations with private property owners on how to reduce the risk of outages as it relates to wires that may be vulnerable to private property trees. We did that a few, a couple of times in Ward 3 over the years successfully. So asking the utility to be more willing to share their experience and be more directly involved where there's cooperation among private property owners to, to understand how those risks are directly related to, to their own power consistency. On the city side of things, we have a number of things that we can get into. I'm going to stop there for a moment in, because I'm talking a little bit more than perhaps I was expected to. But those are just some of the things on the utility side that I think we would like to push more aggressively with, with them. Try to ask them, with this money that they have set aside for investment, to energize, so to speak, their, modernize their grid, how much of that will be spent not just on the ability to upgrade, the ability to serve in terms of the amount of service, but also how much are they going to actually invest in the aging, distribution and transmission systems?
Yeah. So Ken, maybe we could just hear from the chiefs and their, sort of like their take on August 6th and.
Yeah, sure. So again, as I mentioned, you know, one of the components of, of better servicing, better reliability for our residents is our ability to, to manage these outages. So I'll turn it over. Chief Searls, you want to just talk a little bit about your experience?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Flippick. Thank you, Council President. You know, we tend to look at things from the fire side of it and prevention, response, and recovery. And I'm glad we're talking about prevention. Just want to share some of the response with you that day because I think the city as a whole did an amazing job, residents included. You know, we tend to talk about police and fire and public safety, but I know we've had conversations throughout the night, through the multiple days of the storm, and all departments, in, in my view, did an amazing job. We're lucky. When we look at the storm you talked about that night, we initially ran 142 calls storm-related. And yes, a lot of them were do, down to down trees, and the majority of those, 52 of those, were down wire calls. But we saw telephone poles snapped, you know, we saw 86 miles an hour winds, which do a lot of damage. And the one thing I'll talk about here is just the way this community came together, residents and city administration of the 142 calls we ran. We were faced with six plus road closures that we knew about right away. When it was on Bellflower, we saw some related secondary damage from that call. But we had trees on houses. We only had three trees on houses in that August, first storm in August that day. And fortunately, two of them only suffered minor damages. And throughout the storm and the following storm, we really had no injuries in the city. And I think we were very fortunate to have that. I've been here for a long time, and our two tornadoes were just most recently. So we got to keep that in mind. And the other thing I'd like council to know is how well CI, First Energy, worked with us, the response part of it. Ms. Zeeley had been in communication with us several times. We had two house fires that were storm-related. Both were still energized, meaning we still had live power lines on the house. Both were aluminum siding, which meant that the entire exterior of the home was energized. And I know that Ms. Zeeley arranged crews to give priority response to our, our service need on those two incidents, which was amazing. And even during the follow-up, I know that, you know, she called and texted the next day to see if we needed anything. So I appreciate that relationship that we have with First Energy and their ability to, to respond. We have a life and limb number. I'm not sure everybody's aware of that, but it's a special number that we have, that when there's life and limb threatened, that they prioritize the response. And whenever we've used that, they've been, they've been very responsive. So I just would like to comment on those aspects of the storm. You know, I, I think to the city's credit, I, I think that we are very fortunate to have the resources that we have and the willingness of our staff to work together, and that goes throughout the night. They, they were long nights here for everybody. So I'd be glad to comment on anything else, but those are some of my comments related to that first storm in August.
Thank you, chief, and thank you to all of your, your, your staff for their excellent job that day. Thank you.
Thank you. For the police department side, we handled 65 calls for service that were storm-related, but at the same time, there's other calls for service that are going on within the city that we're still responding to. When these storms hit, it causes us to obviously bring in additional people to handle all these calls. And a lot of our calls are related to the, the road closures, the wires down. We respond with the fire department many times to trees down in the houses, help them. It's really a, a good partnership that we have between the fire department, police department, and also Public Works. You know, those, the, the traffic lights that go down, Public Works gets out there as quick as they can, and they, they use the generators to get those all back up. Our main goal is to get those, for a police department standpoint, is to get those roads back open, the, the main roads, and keep that flowing. I can give you one example of a good partnership that we had with the fire department during that last storm. I was in dispatch, which they were having a lot of problems themselves. They're overwhelmed with calls right from the get-go, so they have to get people inside. We had a problem with our generator, our backup battery for a little while, which that's been solved since then. But we had Hopkins Road closed just south of Route 20, and there was just wires across the road, but we didn't know if they were energized or not. Battalion Chief Kydell was in dispatch. I was in dispatch. I asked him, can you send a crew over there, see if they're energized or not? He cut a, cut a crew loose, sent them right over there, able to find out they were cable lines. We were able to cut those, get that road open. So it was really a, a good partnership, and we worked together well with that. But again, they are taxing accidents, wires down, alarms, so many alarms that come in during that time. And we have to prioritize when we go to call, different calls for service. But labor intensive, obviously, when those roads need to be closed and we need to block them. Again, first, it starts with an officer. Could move to traffic cones, could move to barricades. Public Works brings out. We have barricades. But overall, I mean, we do a great job, I think, in this city responding to these incidents. And if we can mitigate any of that, that really helps out.
Right. Thank you, chief, to your, your staff.
Can I make a statement? I just wanted to commend both of the chiefs. Over the years, we've had residents that have been somewhat adverse to connecting roads in different neighborhoods. And both of you were very adamant about the necessity for it. I mean, like on a life and death call, a couple of minutes can make. And I think with the road closures that we had, I think we're all glad that we had alternatives. I mean, I personally drove to work a different way every day, but even though it seemed at the time the residents weren't happy that lived in an existing neighborhood, I think it proved the importance of the connectivity of the roads in Manner. So I thank you because we counted on you, and you were kind of our support for the reason for doing it. So thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I'll just add to that, Mr. President, that, you know, I think our residents can be pretty well assured that we're maintaining that response capability as well as we can. Council has certainly been very supportive of the investment that we've made in, in being able to keep our key facilities open during these times. And we've really focused on that a lot over the last decade. In particular, you know, we have backup generation at all of our key facilities that's reliable. We have traffic, we have traffic management capabilities at most of our intersections. We did have the senior center open, which is also fully backed up with generator power open for our residents who were in need. We did food distribution there for those who lost their food and were in need. We brought, probably 100 people went through there just to use it as a charging station for phones. We had our, our fire and medic personnel available to assist when, for those who had special medical needs or prescription needs. And I will say that, and I think Chief Searls touched on this, we have a very good working relationship in coordinating with both public, nonprofit, and even private property owners during these, these times of, of quick response. We have a great relationship with our county, our county counterparts as well. We even were able to talk to the newest owner of the Sears facility to allow that property to be used by the 400 different vehicles that were coming into Lake County and surrounding areas as a, as a distribution point for them, as a sort of a place where they could mobilize. So having those relationships in place and taking advantage of them during crisis is a good thing. Doesn't stop the outages, we all realize that, but it does provide critical services to the, being able to continue our critical service provision is important during that, during that time. And I know we'll talk a little bit more about what the city's role could be outside of the utility role here probably shortly.
And, and Ken, I'm glad you've touched on the, the Sears property and the new owner allowing the staging to go on there. Because I think we probably all got a chance to see all those trucks that came rolling in. I had the opportunity to get out amongst them and just say, thank you for coming. Thanks, thanks. And they were from all over the place, Pennsylvania, Indiana, Michigan.
All over the country.
And man, they came here and they got us put back online. Because a lot of us probably remember that we were told that it was going to be August 14th before power to be reconnected. And then those guys came rolling in and got it done within five days in most parts. So thanks to all those, those guys that came and did that. Tonight, we were scheduled to have First Energy representative come and discuss this with us, but the First Energy management had asked her not to attend this meeting until after they made, First Energy made a full report to the PUCO. But she has told me that she'd be more than happy to come to any subsequent meetings and, and meet with us on this subject because she knows how important this is to us. So that being said, I think the next person I'd like to call up is State Senator Jerry Serino. Jerry has been a terrific friend to Manner as, in his role as state senator, also in his role as county commissioner. Jerry knows this community really well, and the great thing about Jerry is he serves on the State House Energy and Utilities Committee. So that makes him like one of the premier friends that we have. Hello, Jerry.
Councilman, great to be here. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Good evening to everybody. I'd like to just make a few comments on this subject and be happy to take any questions if you have them as well. This was one heck of a storm. I won't say it was once in a lifetime because I've seen worse ones, and most of us have, but it was pretty devastating. And I looked around, I drove around Lake County. And my district, as you know, goes all the way out to Brexville and Independence and Seven Hills and South Tusculon. So I, this damage did not really spare anybody, to certain degrees, certainly. And it was not just power outages that were the result of the storm. As the chiefs mentioned, the wind damage was just horrific. There's also damage to people's homes that didn't affect the power lines necessarily. And I had, one of my daughters in Concord had a tree come down on the back of their brand-new house, and that was made for an interesting evening. And, and just like you have here in Manner, the first responders that I personally experienced with my daughter trying to put tarps over openings in the roof, the first responders were great. And my, again, I'd like to add my commendation to the chiefs for the, all the great work that was done here. So I think there's some lessons. I mean, like all of you, I received calls, a steady stream of calls from constituents about all kinds of things, you know, when is, when is power going to be back on? Of course, none of us had the answer to that exactly. But I had some, I had calls from individual homeowners who had, let's say, one had a spouse who was in a, was disabled, probably in his, you know, maybe closing days, and was not able to make adjustments to his bed. His bed was sitting in the living room. And, you know, she called me and she was just freaked out because, you know, she didn't know how she was going to keep, keep him in that same position for how, you know, several days possibly. And it really piqued in my mind the, the idea that, you know, we need to really push for generators as much as possible. I know I had one, a gas generator installed last March. And so I was, the good news for me was that, that we didn't have any loss of power. The bad news was that several of my kids ended up losing power and coming over to live with us for a few days. So, but that was great. We got a chance to bond and get to know each other again. But I think there, and I got a call from a senior living facility in Wickliffe that didn't have a generator, didn't have any power backup whatsoever. And I had to call Wendy and, and try to mobilize some people to get out there and install a generator that they finally got their hands on. And we're going to be taking a look at what are the requirements for places that are supposed to have backup generation for critical situations and making sure that, that those requirements are out there and that they're, they're followed through. As Councilman Blake mentioned, PUCO will be making their, excuse me, will be getting their report from First Energy tomorrow. PUCO is meeting tomorrow. And it should be, if, if the past is any prediction, should be a very comprehensive, not only assessment of what the damage that was done, but also what their response was like. And I can tell you that I don't have empirical data to suggest how their response was, but just from my observations, also looking at Great Lakes Mall, as I drive by there almost every day, and just seeing all those trucks. In fact, when I called First Energy the night of the storm to find out what was going on, one of the things they said was that tomorrow is going to be a travel day. And my first question was, well, what are you talking about? And of course, they explained to me that they've now dispatched trucks from, or crews from South Carolina, from Florida, and neighboring states to us as well, and that they, you know, they had gone down to handle the hurricane, and now they were going to be sent up north to the Midwest to help us deal with our thing here. And I did stop also, Sean, to just chat with the, the crews that were at the mall and thank them for coming up from all kinds of different places. You know, my sense is that, that the response, and we'll see what the final report says and even questions after that. My assessment was that for the kind of storm that we experienced here, that the response was pretty darn good, I think. Yes, people were inconvenienced, people lost food, people, you know, couldn't do things that they normally would do. But we live in that part of the country where this sort of thing happens now and then. Unfortunately, Manner seems to be, you know, on the flight path for a lot of storms. And I guess there's nothing we can do about that. But I do think too, and I went through Wade Hill, which is probably, they actually had And I saw some massive trees down that they took out power and took out some properties as well. And so it wasn't localized to Mentor certainly, but obviously that's your major concern here. I, I think we're going to, you know, when it comes to the requirements for managing tree growth and so on, and I'm glad you brought this up, Councilman, because I think it's, it's something important. And we'll assess this when we see their report, how aggressive they have been and if they've been aggressive enough, I should say, in managing tree growth. Are consumers reporting, you know, issues? I have made calls in, in years past to, not only for my own property, but for properties that I've driven by, when you can look at it and you can say, "This is an accident waiting to happen." Okay? And I think our, our citizens can, can be helpful as well in making sure that they're aggressively noticing these things on their property or others' property where they can make a report and, and get some attention from First Energy. I think, I think that could be very helpful. I think the, as I, again, I've driven around in the, in the days and weeks after the storm, that all the cities that I've experienced in my, in my Senate district have just been just working their tails off to clean things up, get things off the streets, get things off of the front lawns and so on. And I think it's a real testimony to the quality of the communities that we all live in here in Lake County for sure. Not just Lake County, but, but certainly that's the county we all live in. And I think we should be very proud of, of the response that was given. The churches and some, and the municipalities as well and townships made facilities available to their citizens, provided necessities that were, they were unable to get, medical care. I happened to go into Lake West Hospital during the, the day after, and they had, they were working on backup generators, but it was awfully hot in that hospital. And so we're going to, we've been talking to UH about possibly doing some things in terms of enhancing generation support there. They had to cancel lots of procedures and lots of people had to reschedule and maybe in some cases, critical things didn't get done. So we're going to be looking at all of that. I think, again, if you have suggestions about things that the state could do, I'm all ears. Again, as, as Councilman Blake mentioned, I am in the Energy Committee, and we try to keep as close an eye on PUCO as we possibly can. The last thing I'd like to just briefly mention is the subject that Ken Filipek brought up, and that is power generation in general, not just related to the storm. We have a big problem coming our way. You know, it wasn't too long ago that many of us were pushing to keep Perry open, right? 2016 and beyond. And as Commissioner, I spent a lot of time traveling to DC and to, to PJM in Philadelphia and to Columbus to testify to try to keep Perry open for two reasons. One was the employment issue for Lake County, which is huge. The second issue, and probably the more long, the more important long-term issue, was the, the power generation, the baseload power that our two nuclear plants generate. And both of those plants would be closed today if we hadn't intervened. All of the stuff, the negative stuff about House Bill 6, I had nothing to do with that. We were just trying to keep, keep the plants open. And if we were, if we had closed, allowed those plants to close, and they would be by now, we would be in a real fix here. Here's what we're seeing right now in the macro scheme of power generation, what we call baseload power. Baseload power is power that is stored and can be counted on to be generated, okay? Unlike alternative energy, which is great, I have no problem with alternative energy, but it's not baseload and it can't be counted upon. It's subject to wind or sun or other factors. If you look right now at data centers, which are the big rage, and they operate 24/7. If you, I told Roger Sustar the other day, I was with him, and I said, "Roger, you're a manufacturing guy." And he's a big, important part of the Mentor, you know, economic picture here. If you take a 100,000 square foot manufacturing facility, put it next to 100,000 foot, square foot data center, what do you think the power difference is going to be, the usage is going to be? It's substantial. Some have estimated it's 20 to 1. Okay? And data centers, again, they operate 24/7. We want them. They bring good jobs, they, they're, should be a part of our economic development scheme. I know they are in the state of Ohio in general, and working with Jobs Ohio and, and others to, to try to attract them here. But they're going to be big drains on our power. And we're in danger right now of, and PUCO has even indicated this to us in our committee hearings, that, that there are, there are brownout situations in our future. Right now, PJM, who manages the grid for 12 states plus the District of Columbia, and we're in that, one of those 12 states, is, is, is having difficulty making sure at certain times of the year and at certain peak periods, making sure that we have adequate power. And the cost is going up. The cost is going, while we sit on one of the largest natural gas deposits on the face of this earth in Ohio, we are seeing electric prices going up because of the, it's basically a shortage of baseload generation. We are attempting to deal with that. We're working with the, the governor, the administration, the PUCO to try to make sure we avoid that. If we think that an interruption in power utilization during a storm is tough, three or four or five days, if we don't address this issue here for baseload power generation secured for the state of Ohio, those storms are going to look like something small compared to what we experience. And think of the economic impact of business, and forget the inconvenience to people in, you know, all of us in our homes. The economic impact, the interruption of economic development is going to be huge. So we have to solve this problem, and I want you to know that we are aware of it. We're trying to make more people aware of it. We're not alarmists, we're not, you know, saying the sky is falling. The sky's already started to fall and we can't deny it. So we're addressing that. And I certainly would love to get any ideas or thoughts all of you have as it relates to your responsibilities in Mentor. But know that we are working on this issue in the state of Ohio. So thank you, Mr. Blake, for the opportunity to be here. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Senator. Counsel?
President, yeah, just, Senator, why does a state and federal government push to have these electric vehicles when batteries don't generate electricity? They store electricity. So the more battery-operated vehicles you have, the more generation you need, which is going to take away from the rest of the economy.
Mr. Krieger, you ask an excellent question. I'm not surprised at that at all. So if, that's the other part of the equation is, at a time when baseload power is going to be at a premium and going to be a little bit more scarce than it is today, maybe a lot more, and data centers are coming into play, which are going to be huge, there is no stopping that growth, okay? And we want to participate in that. You've got this, the green movement, which, which is pushing electric vehicles without concern for where is all the power going to come from to power those. Forget about the, the performance issues of electric vehicles, and that's, that's another discussion. But if they, if, if every, if people began adopting the utilization of electric vehicles en masse right now, we would have an even bigger problem. Because it just, it just takes so much power and the batteries can only hold so much in a charge. And then you have the battery disposition issue, some very toxic things in those batteries, and that hasn't been worked out yet. So I'm okay with the aspiration of electric vehicles, that's nice as an aspiration, but you have to have the practical things settled first. Before you start giving incentives for people to use electric vehicles, you got to make sure that the source of power is there in the first place to be able to support them. Add to that the data center issue and the decline in baseload, we need to, in my opinion, we need to go full bore with natural gas and with more nuclear. That's the only way we're going to solve this problem in the long run and not impact our productivity. I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Jerry, you're bringing up an interesting point with the nuclear. I'm glad you brought that up because that was about going on 10 years now, and I know you made a big push for it. But, you know, that's, nuclear really started over 50 years ago. And at the time, they allowed 100 plants, nuclear plants over the, over the country. I think like 99 are still in existence. I could be wrong on that number, correct? And, you know, as you know, it's clean renewable energy, not to mention jobs. And is there any type of a push from the state and/or federal government to try to really look at that program and, and really move forward in a positive manner because of all the need that we already know? And we know that it's, it's safe renewable energy, so it's good.
Great, no, it's a great point. And, and to answer your question, we're cognizant of it in a state, the problem is that you can't, the state cannot permit a nuclear facility.
Right.
And, and the federal government does not like nuclear. They are doing everything they can to undermine any new established, and it takes a long time to build a nuclear plant. Although the footprints today are very different from Perry or Davis-Bessie, okay? They're not as large, they don't take as long to make or to build, and they're not as expensive. But we should be doing that now, so that 10 years from now, we have, you know, lots of smaller profile nuclear facilities around the, around the country. The FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and that's one of the places I went to visit with Dave Joyce back when I was a commissioner. And we went to them to try to get their help to save Perry and Davis-Bessie. And you would think we were talking to a fire hydrant, okay? They didn't want to hear it. Didn't want to hear, we're not sympathetic to our issues. And they were all about, you know, you know, wanting to take us in a different direction and, you know, claiming that nuclear is not safe, it's extremely safe, okay? They always bring up Chernobyl. Chernobyl was poorly managed, poorly built, and a very poor structure, okay? Run by a totalitarian government who didn't know what the heck they were doing. In the US, nuclear is safe. And so until we see a change in federal policy and federal strategy, I'm afraid we're not going to be able to, to tap into the power and reliability of baseload nuclear power.
Is there any other further thought of just updating what we currently have? I mean, you've been to Perry. I mean, it's 50-year-old technology. It looks like that Jack Lemmon movie, what is that, China Syndrome?
Yeah, which by the way, since you mentioned the China Syndrome, everybody's seen the movie, I presume, right? Love Jack Lemmon, not crazy about her, but, you know, I had a, I had a call during, after I was in the Senate and House Bill 6 was still being discussed, and we did take back some of House Bill 6 that was not good. And this, this student who is a writer for the Kit State Newspaper called me and wanted to interview me because I had an opinion on, on House Bill 6. And I meant, she, she asked me all these questions and she didn't ask me anything about nuclear. I said, "You haven't mentioned nuclear, why, why is that?" She said, "Well, it's not safe, it's very dangerous." And I said, "Really?" I said, "Tell me what, how you know that?" And I thought she was going to bring up Chernobyl, but she didn't. She said, "Well, did you ever hear of the China Syndrome?" And I said, "You know that was a movie. It actually never happened," right? And so I guess she's been following Jane Fonda too long. But, so it's, it's, it's safe, it's extremely reliable, and natural gas is as well. I mean, natural gas has half the carbon of coal, okay? It's not nuclear, it's not as clean as nuclear, but it is awfully clean and in abundance here. And that's the other part of this, is that we're going to see, as energy gets more restricted, the prices are going to go up. And the inflation that we see today may be nothing compared to where we go if energy is not made more abundantly available in a, in a cheaper fashion.
Thank you, thank you.
Sean?
Right. Interesting. Jerry, from a local level, I often hear a lot about maintenance and why they don't have a program where they go out and they look at some of the poles, for instance. I think that pole on Bellflower, it had to have a lot of weight on it, a lot of weight. And a lot of those poles are rotted and they snap. And there, there's vegetation growing on a lot of the poles. And one of the other issues was transformers, whether they have a program where they're replacing older transformers.
Right, right.
And then the other one was faults. I remember during this last, there was an issue, we thought when the pole went back up on Bellflower that everything was going to be back to, well, it wasn't the case because they were looking for a fault. And I got an article here from 2021, I saved, where Perry Township was met with First Energy. And one of the things they discussed was the fact that these underground lines in their city was approaching 30 years. Well, in our city, a lot of them are approaching 50 years. And there isn't a program
Right.
... to replace aging wires underground, and it's very difficult to find when they do have a fault, which is why it took longer, I think, for our problem. And then lastly was, before this event happened, we met with a local business person down on Lake Shore, and he had an outing, his, he had an outage, yet across the street they were on for two days or three days or whatever it was.
Right.
And we talked about that substation on, in Mentor and the lake, and how that was an issue then, and now it was an issue during the storm. So those are the things we were working with before the storm with Wendy, was there going to be some upgrades to that station? Are they going to switch some of these, these circuits so that some people aren't, that they're all affected at the same time?
Right.
Instead of having one guy on the other side of the street on and you're off and costing you having to send employees home? So that's, I know that we're talking about nuclear power and other, but from a local level, from what we, a lot of us get, is these maintenance issues.
Right.
I don't know if they have a maintenance program where they go out and they have a yearly inspection of the poles and they do this, but I don't know that.
I am, that's a great question. I am aware that they have a, a maintenance, a rather elaborate maintenance program. Now, is it adequate? Is it, does it leave something to be desired? We'll have to see. But that's one of the things that PUCO has a responsibility to make sure that they are properly setting that up and following through with it. And PUCO comes to my committee to report on all matters of energy. And so you can bet that when, when they come in next, when we're back in session after the election, that we will be having PUCO come in and answering questions from us regarding how they're managing First Energy and other generators around the state, or, or distribution companies rather, around the state, to make sure that those maintenance programs are aggressive enough. They very often go to PUCO to get relief on, on capital costs, that's part of their, their pricing structure. And so we'll, we'll have to make sure someone's going to, if there's more maintenance, it's going to get paid for by somebody, all of us as, as homeowners or businesses. But I think that's a great question, and we'll need to, and I think when Wendy does come back in after the report tomorrow, she'll be, you know, if you let her know in advance that you'd like to know more about the maintenance details, I'm sure she'll be able to provide that to you.
Thank you, Senator. I got a question for you. I, I spent a long time talking with Wendy on the phone last week.
Yeah.
And I was surprised, she told me, she said, "You know, Sean, our First Energy right-of-way is 20 feet wide in most places. So you got the wire where it lands on the ground and they can trim within 10 feet each direction." But driving around after our last storm, I'm seeing these huge trees that just blow apart. And my feeling is, is you can predict for these storms. They, they move west to east.
Right.
Maybe north, southwest, east, but they're, they move in the general same line. My feeling is, is that you can predict what trees are going to start blowing apart. Maybe not next year's storm, but maybe the, the year after that. Is there possibility of any state program that could help people who maybe 50 years ago dragged a sapling into their yard, put it in the ground
Right.
... and then walked away? Now that tree is 50 feet high, it's west of a power line.
Right.
And it's, you could tell that it's 70 feet high, the power line's 35 feet high. It's going to blow apart and take out power to the neighborhood. And I think this was Janet's question that I may have stolen from her. But is there any state program that could maybe help with trees that need to be trimmed back that is not in the First Energy right-of-way, and they may not be able to leverage those homeowners?
You know, there, there is not, to my knowledge, a current program, but doesn't mean there, there can't be something. I was amazed, I'm glad you brought this up because as I was driving around my entire district, I was, it's not a scientific survey, but the trees, the large trees that took their whole entire root system up seem to be more than I've seen in a very, very long time. Mentor had quite a few, right? These are, these are trees that, I don't, I'm not an arborist, but these are trees that don't have
Maples.
... deep root systems. Maples?
Maples.
Okay. They don't have deep root systems. And whether they take power out or somebody's house, it, it doesn't matter, they're, they're going to come down when you have 80 to 90 mile an hour winds.
Right.
And now we, we do have a resource locally. I've spent a lot of time meeting with the folks at Holden Arboretum. We have some of the, some of the world-renowned experts. And, you know, we experts. And, you know, we got to figure out, we, the state gives them a lot of money to do a lot of things. And, and for good causes, certainly. And it's a great property for us to have in Lake County. And so maybe there's some way we can tap into some notifications by the experts that can come and do some surveys at residents' requests and, and offer an opinion about, you know, hey, this tree is not going to make it. This tree is more at risk than others. And maybe some preemptive work could be done to prevent some kind of a, a very bad incident from happening. I don't know what it is about, is there something unique about Garfield Road? I mean, it must be in the polar vortex or something because I go up there every day practically, and it just seems to get nailed every time we have a big storm. This time wasn't quite so bad as the, the one last year, I think. But anyway, I hope I answered your question. But we, we, we can have something. I don't believe we have anything right now that would preempt, but doesn't mean we can't.
Mr. President, one last question. Jerry, you mentioned the PUCO meeting tomorrow. Is that a meeting that you could watch online? Is it televised in any way, shape, or form?
That's a great question, and I'm not positive. They should be open. And they, they should be available on the Ohio Channel, but I'm not going to take that, don't take that to the bank. I'm not, I'm not positive. And, and, I mean, they, they fall under the same sunshine laws that the rest of us have to deal with, right? So my guess is that it would be, but I, I could be wrong.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Just a question for Jerry. During COVID, the state was very proactive and was very helpful with small businesses. I mean, programs like returning your entire workers' comp premium from the previous year, put a lot of cash into businesses and helped a lot of the small businesses especially survive. I like, I like the thing about, we have our Tree Commission, and I'd like to see a work with Holden Arboretum and get some of this information. The costs are so phenomenal. And we have an aging population in all of Lake County, but especially Manner. And the costs are, you know, are really prohibitive. So every time I turn around, you're hearing about some subsidy, and I'm not saying Ohio, this is typically on the federal level, some subsidy for some green energy this or green energy that. It's like, why can't we subsidize some of our senior citizens and things? And to try to put a program together, because I don't think anybody can really calculate what the dollar cost was of that storm. I mean, how, how do you even know between the businesses that were closed, you know? And when you have a business here in Ohio, your customer in California has no sympathy that you're down for five days. They just don't. And, and so to try to put something together or, or to help with like generators, acquisition of generators, to do something. And is that something your committee would do? Or is this something that would have to be on the federal level and we're probably?
There, there certainly are. Those are great points. A lot of federal things that, subsidies that are done through income tax credits or other, other means. But we do have some of those capabilities at the state level. You remember a time when, when, back a long time ago, when we got tax credits for insulating our homes, or buying insulating windows, or, you know, those kinds of things. You know, what's wrong with generators? I mean, let's face it, we are going to have storms, you know? We, we, it's just going to be a fact. And so, you know, that's something that, that my committee would, would look at. I am, you know, assuming I, I get reelected, which I'm hoping that will be the case, I will likely be the chairman of the Finance Committee in the Senate. And we are going to be very engaged. And I'm also on Ways and Means, which does all the taxes, tax laws in the Senate. So I will have an opportunity to really step up with some program ideas. Love to get further feedback from all of you on what kinds of things we can do. And, you know, I think there's so many different aspects of this storm, the consequences and how we deal with it. Some they're unavoidable. We can't affect the weather, obviously, but our response to it and our preemption on things like trees and generators could really make a difference here. The other part of it is, is looking at insurance. How many of you received a notice from your insurance company? Okay? Businesses and homeowners, right? I had no damage, fortunately, to my house, but I got a message from Westfield, who I've been with for 50 years. And they're a pretty large insurer and headquartered in Ohio. And they told me that the policy that was just automatically renewed was, is, is going to have some new riders to it. And that was a reduction in roof replacements. And, and it came, it came like two weeks after the storm, right? And I know I've heard from a lot of constituents that got similar notices. And that's going to, that's certainly not going to help us with inflation these days. But those are going to be baked-in increases in costs to homeowners and to businesses. They're not going to look five years from now and say, you know what? You haven't had a lot of damage. We're going to take that, we're going to reduce your premium again. That's not going to happen. That is baked in, and it's going to be cumulative over a long, long period of time. So that's another area we have to help our residents manage around in dealing with insurance companies because they're businesses, and their business is to make money and to reduce risk for themselves. And we have to help our citizens look out for themselves and protect them as best we can.
We had, we had a talk earlier today, and we were talking about for some of the senior citizens, by the time they get done paying their property taxes, their property insurance and that, it's, their entire social security is just taken up. So what is left? So if they don't have other investments. And it's, it's just really hurting the, you know, most vulnerable of the population in times like this.
Well, this is a key component of inflation. Inflation is a tax. It's a tax. I was explaining to one of my grandsons, what, he said, what is inflation, grandpa? I said, well, you got two hours. We'll, we'll go through it. But I tried to give him the, the short course on it. And I said, when you have too much of something, it's worth less, right? If this room were filled with diamonds, the, the value of diamonds would, would go down, right? And so when you have too many dollars being printed and, and leveraged, that the dollar becomes worth less, and it takes more of those dollars to buy things. That's inflation. And it is a hidden tax, not so hidden anymore, that is making life for our, our people, particularly our fixed income folks. And you're right, Lake County is an aging population. You know, the only reason why Lake County does not have a AAA bond rating is because we have no growth in the county and we have an aging population. Okay? That's, that's, it's like the bond rating companies are saying, you're not going to have as many customers and you're not growing your customer base. So we're going to, you have a little bit more risk than, than Solon, who is growing in, in population, or somebody else. So that's another thing. We're looking at property taxes. I, I don't want to bring up the whole property tax thing, but we are looking at different options with how we can help with that. There's no way the state's going to make up the difference for everybody, you know, in property taxes. I did, have tried to explain to some residents that a, an increase in valuation of 30% does not mean your property taxes are going to go up 30%. And a lot of people think that. So you could do them a big favor by disabusing them of that concept. They're going to go up, but not nearly as, probably single-digit. But we're floating a lot of proposals. There are at least six bills in the House and Senate that have been sitting and ruminating all summer that we'll address when we get back in. But we are looking at it, and we're going to do what we can, particularly for people, certain age groups. We're looking at, I'm a proponent of increasing the, the homestead exemption, not only the increase in poverty level, but also maybe just making it a mandatory at a certain age, regardless of your income, with maybe some exceptions. We don't need to be covering the property tax increases for millionaires. Okay? We don't want to do that. So we're addressing that, and I'll be have, love to come back when we have some answers for you and talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Serrano.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You've always been a great friend to Manner, and it's appreciated. And thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So next, I'd like to call up Rod Schroeder. Rod is Chair of our Tree Commission. And Rod knows all about trees. And thank you, Rod, for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
And so I'll let you have the floor.
Yeah, you asked me to come. I don't know which way you would like to go on this. I've done a little bit of investigation. I know we talked about the Davy Tree, Tree Inventory, which would go so many feet off the center of the road, encroaching people's front yards and stuff. But it's really not feasible. It's, they want a minimum of 20,000 trees to inventory, probably around $3 a tree, and the first availability will be in July next year. So that doesn't help us out right now.
So Rod, not to interrupt you, though. I think the question that I have is identifying trees that are a risk to blowing apart in storms.
Right. I'm, I'm trying to work my way to that. But no, that's okay. No, that's okay. So I figured, you know, there's got to be another way to do this. It would probably be more feasible. And the only one thing I can come up with is we have to maybe start pushing some of it on our employees. They're the ones that are out on the road every day, in people's yards, on the streets, and just to be a little more aware of what's out there. We can't send a crew of two people to go through everybody's yards, backyards, sideyards, and start inventory and stuff. We just have to, just start noticing what's out there. You know, be a little more proactive on their daily job duties. I am, I'm working with a lady from Chagrin Falls. She's a retired school teacher. And she's coming up with her own app. And the Chagrin Falls Shady Tree Commission is currently using it. And what it is, it's a series of spreadsheets where you just, you know, enter all the data from whatever it could be. It could be from sewers, roads, but she's doing it with trees. And if I have the app, or if anybody on council has the app, let's say you're at, you know, somebody's house and you're walking out, man, there's a, there's a rough-looking tree there. Plug it in. Everybody gets a notification. So there's no paperwork lost. Everybody's aware of what's going on. If somebody on the way home, you're on your way home, I'm going to go take a look at it real quick. Buzz, but I see it. We have to start somewhere with something. I, I just, I don't know where it is, really. Just, we have to just be more aware of, you know, our workers have to be more aware out there and start with that.
Rod, let me ask you. If, if we start looking at trees, is there a way that we can look at a tree and tell if it's, if it has a potential for blowing apart in the next storm? Not only height. What, what do you look at to tell if a tree is?
There's obvious indicators. I mean, if the bark stripped off, if there's no leaves, if there's giant cavities in the tree. Yeah, it's an indicator. A tree's a hazard. But, you know, I was on, I believe it was Hopkins Road, a little mountain. There's a giant oak tree that blew over on somebody's yard. That tree was perfectly healthy. It's just with two inches of rain an hour, the ground's completely saturated. And with high winds, it's a sail. That's hard to predict. You know, that's, that's a tough one. But, I mean, you can obviously, you know, predict the dead ones, but I've seen dead trees stand for 10 years, and how come it hasn't fallen down yet? You know? So, I mean, I don't think I have the perfect answer. But, I, I mean, I would like to see us maybe, as a city, maybe be a little more active in street trees. You know, so if we do have guys out there doing a little more attention, giving more attention to the street trees, they're out there on the roads. You know, they're looking in people's front yards, you know, hey, we just got a new roof. Oh, man, that tree's dead. Maybe we should put it in our app and shoot it around, you know? I mean, that's the only thing I can come up with. We have to start somewhere. And just identifying is a start.
Gotcha.
So.
Thank you very much, Rod. We appreciate your input.
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rod, do you know if, does First Energy have a tree program where they come through and should be maintaining these trees and they're just not keeping up on it?
I think from what Wendy said, that's trees in the right-of-way. But then she gets a little vague on anything that's a risk that's out of the right-of-way.
Private property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they do that anymore. And I, I think from, and I don't want to speak for her. Maybe we'll get a chance to hear from her directly. But that's, it's private property. It's somebody's tree.
Right.
And, you know, I think there's a predictability as to what trees are likely to blow apart in the next storm. Because I, I firmly believe we're going to see these storms every year and probably get to a point where we start seeing two of them per year. But they're going to come again. And there just has to be something that we can do to predict what trees are going to take out whole neighborhoods and make their refrigerators just rot. I mean, this council, I wasn't on this council when you guys addressed the, the water problem. But you guys did a great job of that. And you solved a very big problem. I think this is a big problem.
Mr. President, could I ask Rod a question? When it comes to trees on private property, I don't know if maybe we could do something more educationally, maybe ante a video or something on that line of explaining the importance of pruning and maintaining the trees. Because isn't, I mean, it's a cost if you do it every year or every other year. But if you let it go too far, isn't the cost prohibitively more? I mean, and the dangers? So to explain the benefits of the tree maintenance, I mean, I know it's, it's, it is a cost, but it's not that nine, $10,000 that somebody's looking at taking a tree down now.
Right. I, I know in the past, we tried putting on a little workshop for young tree training. We really didn't have too much, you know, interest in it. But I, I mean, I guess everything's online anymore. If we're to put something on the city website, just to notify people, you know? And I believe, you know, we have a certified arborist on staff that could answer questions.
Because people forget quickly. I mean, now everything's back to so-called normal and people forget. And as Sean said, we'll probably be looking again next year at the same issues, so.
Like it's been mentioned, I mean, tree work's expensive. And people don't think about, you know, hey, it's, you know, what happens? Or allocating their money somewhere else. And with inflation and the way times are, they're saying, oh, I'll worry about it when it falls, or, you know, which is sad. It's, it's like anything else. It's maintenance. It's like changing the filter in your furnace. You have to give it attention all your life. So.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think Mrs. Dowling brings up a, a good point. It was one of the points that we were going to actually make as we extended this conversation, that I think this, among the things that the city can do, would be bringing some public awareness to the idea that we want to maybe start encouraging people to pay closer attention to their own trees, to their neighbors' trees. I mean, we're not looking for people to, you know, cause, cause trouble among the neighbors. But if, if there's a rather large tree that's dying or that's dead, it, it can have an impact, not just on cost and reliability of service, but on safety in general. So I think we can do more to maybe put together some public service announcements to help people to understand what to look for and who to call. We seem to get plenty of those calls during the course of the year. And I think our city does a very good job of, of code enforcement with those. Mr. Zeeman can tell you that occasionally we will end up in court over these issues or be challenged. But there is an appeal, very sophisticated appeal process in place, and residents always have the right to challenge a finding. As was mentioned, we have a, an arborist on staff. We utilize contracted arborist services as well. I think, you know, in terms of what the city has already done, that I think could pay greater dividends. And, and I know Councilman Freeman was a catalyst for bringing that conversation forward about some of the trees in our right-of-way that just maybe aren't that desirable anymore. And we did change as a result of that conversation. We did add language that, that currently allows residents to be considered for tree removal permits, a permit to have their right-of-way tree removed, if those trees are reaching the end of their predictable age and so that they could be replaced with younger trees, not just for safety reasons or, or utility reasons for reliability, but also just to continue to diversify the age of our urban forest. We also allow for trees to be considered for remover, removal if they're just in a bad spot, or if they're unlikely to remain healthy and cause significant damage to public infrastructure. And that would include, I would say that would also be considered for private infrastructure. So I think we've gotten a lot more liberal in our allowance for the removal of street trees. And I remind residents that anytime a mature tree is removed in the right-of-way, the city is more than willing to, to pay for a tree to be replaced. is more than willing to pay for a tree to be replaced. And when we replace those, our Tree Commission has done a very good job of identifying those species that are, that are best suited for the right-of-way, that'll both survive longer and also cause less problems for the infrastructure. So I think those are some of the things that we can pursue already as it comes to, as it relates to private property. We don't have the right to just walk onto someone's property and start snooping around for trees that we don't like, but if we, we can certainly encourage neighbors and, as they walk their neighborhood, as they talk to their neighbors, to understand the ramifications, not just for themselves, but for the entire area that's served by those, by those overhead lines.
Very good. All right. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. President, the only thing I think that we should, and you touched upon this, that there's going to be a significant investment in infrastructure and transmission. And you're saying that it's a bit challenging to get information on the plans going forward. I think we should probably leverage, you know, the connections with Senator Sereno as to whether we need, like, Lake County managers and mayors, so that we have an idea of where the utility is headed, and that we have an ability to have an influence and an impact on where investments are going to be made. As you pointed out, I have a particular place in, which Bruce Landig worked on for a long time as well, and it's still an issue in terms of power outages on a regular basis. Whether that's a maintenance issue, whether that's an issue having to do with just how the circuit's set up, regardless, if we can, as a city, identify where those type of recurring problems are, and then be informed of where investments are planning to be made in the future because of the increasing demands for energy, for AI, manufacturing, et cetera, and then have, be able to interface, if not with the utility, with the Public Utilities Commission, who ultimately oversees that utility. I think that's something that we should invest time and thought into, not just as a city, but as a, linked up with our fellow municipalities, because I think the frustration of some, or I know of many residents is, is that, and Councilman Kirchner brought it up, is, are you, is the amount of maintenance appropriate? And particularly if they're going to invest in, quote, "upgrade," are we going to upgrade in ways that are going to minimize or eliminate some of those recurring problems that have gone on for years? So I think a lot of the discussion has been helpful, and trees are certainly part of the issue, but when you still are having weeks and weeks after this last storm, power outages, it isn't just trees that are at issue, and I think we need to address that and think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.